The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ngracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. Mr. President. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Martin. Alderman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-four present.
Quorum being present. Let's everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to rise, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. This meeting is a continuation of the April 16th meeting. Before we begin this continuation, I'm going to ask for any introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of Aldermen from the 18th.
Dimitris L. Alfred is my honored guest.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Aldermen from the 10th, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, we're gathered here on April 26th. It was on this day in 1921 that the first radio broadcast of weather was ever done right here in St. Louis, Missouri. But more importantly, this is Arbor Day, our National Hug and Australian Day, so go hug a tree or somebody at Outback Steakhouse later. Thank you very much.
So just to recap where we left off, the last meeting, we swore in all of the newly, Alderman from the first. Okay. Where we left off, we had adopted numerous resolutions, and if you go to the resolutions calendar, under first reading resolutions, we were holding on Resolutions One. We adopted Resolution Two, where the Board of Aldermen authorizes the ordinance to hire staff for 2019, 2020 session. We went on and adopted Resolution Number Three. The Board of Aldermen authorizes and directs the clerk of the Board to prepare the index to the Journal of the Board for the 2019-20 session, and that the Journal be prepared in both bound and printed formats and in electronic format, and the numbers to be determined by the clerk, but in an event not to exceed 15 copies total. We also adopted Resolution Number Four. The Board of Aldermen hereby authorizes a continued payment to each Alderman and the President of the Board of Aldermen of an expense allowance in the amount of $300, and the issuance of an equivalent of $200 in U.S. postage stamps per month. And that's where we left off, the last agenda, that's a recap of last week's agenda. Alderman from the 19th.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I wanted to propose that I was on the prevailing side of one of our votes in the last session, in the last meeting, and by being voting on the prevailing side of the outcome of Resolution Number Two, I'd like to move to reconsider it.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 19th. Entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 27th, that we move to reconsider the vote for Resolution Number Two. Resolution Number Two is the hiring of staff, so that we can properly debrief the Board on some things. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ngracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Pam Boyd. Alderman Navarro. Mr. President. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Martin. Twenty-three aye votes, one no vote, and one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 19th. Now what's before us is the adoption of Resolution Number Two. Would you like to make a motion, now that it's back before us, we reconsidered that vote, now it's back before us, would you like to make a motion for its adoption? Have a second.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Resolution Number Two, and I'd like to divide the question.
All right. There's been a request of division of the question, Aldermen from the, Alderman from the 16th.
Just as a point of order, can the Alderman from the 18th, 19th, sorry, specify which question we're dividing?
She's divided, she would like to divide Resolution Number, she just put the proposition out there to divide Resolution Number Two. Would you like to specify what part you'd like divided out?
Right, I can do that.
And the staff, okay.
Sure. So this resolution pertains to staff, and I'd like to take one position and divide it out as a separate discussion.
Okay.
And because we still have public in chambers, I shall not use names.
Understood.
Okay. Just a, what's the title of the position?
The title of the position?
Yeah, is that the legal counsel?
That's the same thing, that's the personnel issue.
Okay, got it. So there's been a request for division of the question, we honor and division of the question as, that as allowed under Rule Forty-four of the Board of Aldermen. So is there a request to go into closed session?
Entertain or make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss the matter?
It's been, we, it's been moved by Alderman from the 16th, that we go into closed session. Entertain a second on that motion. Second it by Alderman from the 24th. Alderman now.
We're going to go into closed session, because I'm kind of getting a little weary about open sessions.
Yeah, under, under Rule Eight, we're allowed to go into closed session during the course of a meeting if we are going to discuss, you know, personnel matters.
Uh, legal.
Yeah, yeah. So it's been moved and seconded, that we go into closed session. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ngracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. Mr. President.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Rice. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Howard. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Con. Twenty-two aye votes, one no vote, and one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 16th. So we are now going into closed session. I'll ask City TV to turn off the cameras. Madam Clerk, please sound off the mics. I'll ask everyone except for members of the Board of Aldermen to please exit the chambers. And with the Marshals, please sure that the gallery is off. The Board would now come back to order after our closed session. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number One that we left off last week. Aldermen from the 7th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to adopt Resolution Number One.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody, I think you all have a copy of our proposed rules for Resolution Number One on your desk. There should be a redlined copy showing the various changes. As you may remember, at caucus, we discussed a number of things. One of our colleagues made a motion to make sure that the rules are gender neutral, and I believe that should be consistent throughout our rules. We've gotten rid of any his slash hers, him, she's, and made it they, their, to be consistent throughout. There was also a motion made and adopted at caucus to add a new standing committee. I think you'll see that reflected in the rules on page, page 12. You'll see that under Section Five, the new Education and Youth Matters Committee. And it also has a description of that committee on page 13. And probably the most notable change that we agreed to at caucus, which I know has been the topic of much conversation in this body and in the newspapers, was the changes proposed to Rule Thirty-One, to try to bring some order and decorum to this body, to this chamber. You know, I think we've all known that this is probably a long time coming, and I would like to acknowledge the work done by many of our colleagues in this room previously to bring this issue to the forefront and talk about it. And I think ultimately it was agreed that the rules, our rules, that govern this body are the way to deal with this. So as you see on page 17 of the redlined proposed rules, we have the proposed change that we agreed to at caucus, which would ban registered lobbyists under Missouri state law from the floor of the Board of Aldermen. It would also ban anyone with direct personal or pecuniary interest in any legislative measures pending before this Board from the floor. And lastly, any employees or represent, I should say representatives, we'll call that a Scrivener's air, oh, sorry, no, that's correct, is an employee or represents any party, that's correct, or organization for the purpose of influencing directly or indirectly the passage, defeat, or amendment of any legislative proposal pending before the Board of Aldermen or its committees. Now, this language comes straight from the United States House of Representatives rules governing who can be in the chamber rooms and on the floor of the U.S. House of Representatives. And the reason I mirrored it after that language in this proposed rule change is because our rules, as you, as you all know, when they're silent, we are, we are to refer to the U.S. House rules to govern ourselves, so it seemed appropriate to do that. What this rule does not do is, I mean, it does not ban, obviously, members of the media from the floor. They very much still be allowed and welcome, we welcome their, their participation down here every week. It does not ban you from bringing your immediate family members. You know, I know we have a number of members who bring their children, bring their spouses, you can definitely still do that. And lastly, and probably most importantly, those that we are choosing to honor each week via courtesy resolution are welcome here on the floor. I mean, obviously, we, we honor all sorts of groups and city employees and everything else. We want them here, we want to recognize them for their service and their, and their accomplishments, so they'll obviously be welcome on the floor still as honored guests. The other thing that this bill does is try to attempt to address some issues in the gallery. And I know this has been somewhat controversial topic, and I understand there may be some amendments coming. Section Six puts together kind of a gallery pass system, also very similar to what's done in the, in the United States Congress. I recognize we're not necessarily as important as Congress, but based on some issues we've had in the past in the gallery, I think this is something, at least at caucus, people were supportive of. And it also would ban noise amplifying devices from the gallery and explicit, make explicit in our rules, which isn't really currently in there in paragraph seven, that the President shall be responsible for preserving the decorum in the gallery. So that's what this attempts to do. I'm open to feedback and questions, and I do appreciate the support of so many of you at our caucus meeting a couple weeks ago.
Aldermen from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Aye. And thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. I just want to first state that I appreciate the Aldermen from the Seventh Ward's work on this particular rule change. I think that, you know, during caucus, we had a lot of discussion and confusion around what constitutes the gallery versus the floor, which led to greater confusion once the, you know, the concept of the rules had been, you know, published out in the media. I don't think that it was, and I'm speaking from my, my perspective, not the full body here, but, you know, I don't think that, it certainly wasn't my intention, I would imagine it wasn't the intention of the Aldermen from the Sixth Ward or any of our colleagues, that, you know, we would extricate the public from our legislative body. Certainly, all of us, myself included, are very, you know, connected to the communities in which we serve, you know, from neighborhood meetings every week, every month, to, you know, participating in discussions in people's living rooms that are constituents. And so, you know, I think that when I first got down here, you know, the, I guess the saying that was shared with me, which is very true still to this day, is that as local representatives, we get to hear it all, right? We get the constituent complaints from, you know, trash in the alleyways, all the way up to, you know, issues with regard to Medicare, Medicaid, housing, everything. And so, you know, we're the first line of defense and the kind of hierarchy of elected officials. And so I think that it's worthwhile that, you know, we, we practice good government and separating ourselves from, you know, lobbyists, the lobbyist class, I'll call it, but also make ourselves accessible to our constituency, which, you know, I think that that should always be paramount. The other thing I would add, because while the Aldermen from the 7th is talking about the particular rule change going, directing who is allowed in the floor and in the gallery, I do want to make mention that there are two other rule changes that are very important as changes as well, and I think move us forward as a body. One is making the rules gender neutral, which was an amendment that I added during caucus to our rules. I think that, you know, we need to be, have a heightened level of sensitivity around gender and gender roles down here at the Board of Aldermen. You know, I would eventually like to acquiesce to our former colleague of the 24th Ward and have us as a city council versus a Board of Aldermen. You know, I think that this is a step in the right direction by changing the rules to be gender neutral, and certainly something that's easier than a charter amendment at this point. And then the second one, you know, was a rule that, you know, I put up for adoption during caucus, which is the creation of a new committee down here at the Board of Aldermen. And I don't think that we should minimize the importance that that committee can help play in bridging conversations across our community with regard to youth and education, particularly as our St. Louis Public Schools now fully accredited is moving back over to their elected board. We hope to have a very smooth transition in that respect. And I think that all of us, you know, individually are very much in tune with those changes that are happening and having conversations, but having a space, I'll say, to have conversations around not just SLPS, but also parochial schools and charter schools and, you know, daycare facilities. You know, I've had conversations with some of our colleagues around, you know, what do we do currently to help manage, you know, like daycare facilities and make sure that they're of quality, you know, so that, you know, we're protecting the young people in our communities. And I think that this is a committee that can start doing that work and start providing a safe space and a voice for the young people in our community to start having those dialogue and that dialogue. And so I'm very excited about those two rule changes as well, so I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we, we talk about those in addition to who's permitted on the floor and the gallery. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the First.
Mr. President, members of the Board, if the Alderman from the 7th would yield.
Yeah, Alderman from the 7th will yield to the Alderman from the 1st. Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Alderman, Rule Thirty-One, Section One, you wrote that during the meeting of the Board of Aldermen, only the mayor and their designated, the comptroller and their designated, and members of the Board of Aldermen, blah, 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 should be admitted on the floor of this chamber. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, this is basically what the rule already says.
Right. Okay. Now, when we go down here to Number Four, it prohibits a registered lobbyist from being on the floor, is that correct?
Number Four would prohibit registered lobbyists and those with any sort of direct sort of interest in legislation, yes.
Okay, so.
Except, obviously, except those that are honored guests.
So a couple of things. So if you're an honored guest, then you could still be on this floor and, and sitting down here as an honored guest, even though you might be a registered lobbyist, is that correct?
So it would be an honored guest who's receiving a courtesy resolution pursuant to Rule Ninety-eight.
So if I want to just bring my honored guest that's a registered lobbyist, I can do a courtesy resolution and have him on the floor?
You certainly are welcome to do that, Alderman. I wouldn't advise it, but you could.
Why wouldn't you advise it? I might have a friend that's a registered lobbyist that I like a lot now.
And if you'd like to honor them, you are more than welcome to.
Well, you don't see me hanging out with the lobbyists at all, so that's not me. I'm asking this as a supposition. What about if I'm a registered lobbyist, a member of the Board of Aldermen?
And so what we tried, we made sure that, what I attempted to do, and Alderman, if you've got a suggestion, I'm open to it, but I wanted to make sure that, because we do have a member of the Board that's a registered lobbyist.
Let's, let's talk about me, so we won't talk about any other member of the Board. Let's say it's me.
Let's pretend you're a registered, so as written, no individual, so an honored guest is defined in subsection three, an individual testifying before a committee of a whole, because there's another scenario where you could potentially need, not need, but require, there might be lobbyists on the floor if we were for some reason meeting as a body of the whole and taking testimony from the public, and I, we haven't done that since I've been down here, but there is a provision of our rules to do that. So in that instance, we might have other people on the floor, and then you'll see in section four, or a member of the Board of Aldermen acting in accordance with these rules and other applicable laws. So that would be the section that would allow members of this Board who may be registered lobbyists or may meet one of those other criteria, have a direct personal or pecuniary interest.
That was the next one.
And the reason I left it sort of open there where it says, acting in accordance with these rules, because we have our own rules governing conflicts of interests and, and what we need to do to disclose if we have, you know, obviously, conflicts, and there's state laws in that too, so the, or other applicable laws will cover those state laws.
So it's not your intent, if I have an interest in a bill, for me not to be on this floor, I just have to pass?
Absolutely not.
And also have to write, write up what my conflict is and give it to the clerk?
You've got to follow our rules and state law.
Right.
But no, you should not be banned. And I, I wrote that thinking, you know, look, I'm a lawyer, I practice law, I recuse myself on votes down here on occasion, I shouldn't be thrown off the floor when we're discussing something, and neither should any of our other colleagues.
And it's not your intent, if I'm a registered lobbyist, that, and, and I'm a member of the Board, that I'd be thrown off the floor?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay. Now, let's go to, I do know about our rules reflecting back to the Congress, okay, the rules, if they're silent.
Correct.
However, let me, I have the problem that I have, and I voted no in, at our meeting a couple of Fridays ago, because I don't understand the need to take the public out of the gallery. We are a public body. I have in my purse my card that I vote. I go into the Board of Representatives, and I have a card that allows me to vote, this one right here. And this is my ID. And all the people who vote for us, they have one just like this, okay? So, and that's what these galleries are for, for people who might want to stop by, come in. Now, as I understand your, the way you would do it, is that we each would have two passes, is that correct? Each of the members of the Board?
As written, that's what it proposes, yes.
Okay, and we would have two passes, and that anybody else will be at the direction of the President. So the President could give unlimited passes to the gallery.
Well, I, I think the seating's somewhat limited, so I don't think it would be an unlimited number.
But the, I'm talking, not the way what you think, I'm talking about the way you have it written. The way it's written is right now, the President could give unlimited passes, is that right?
No, it, well, as written, it says additional guest passes up to the maximum occupancy allowed pursuant to applicable law.
Well, how would we know? Okay, yeah.
I mean, I think the maximum occupancy is, I think it wa, at one point, it was eighty-something, now it's only fifty-something because of the front row.
So if each of us get two?
Yeah, if we each get two, I think there's still a couple left for the President's office.
So then, so, but he could do that, okay? Right? Or she, if we ever get a female, so. So then they would be able to issue, and could these passes go to a registered lobbyist?
The, the rule is silent as to that, I think, I mean, as written, I think the, the, our colleagues could give the passes to whomever they'd like.
So if somebody has a friendly relationship with registered lobbyists, they could have ultimately more access to our ultimately more access to our gallery than the public?
Theoretically.
Not theoretically, it's either right or wrong. If I have a friend and they're a registered lobbyist, and I use my passes each time for registered lobbyists, they would have more ability to go up into that gallery than the people in my ward.
I, that, that's your interpretation. As written, I can tell you that the, the thought was, all right, if we're clearing the floor of a lot of people who are here each week and putting them up in the gallery, I think as individual aldermen, we wanted to make sure that our constituents still had a spot if they were to come down, and that's, this was the effort to ensure that.
So, but what are we going to do with all these nice, beautiful people like the former alderman from the 26th? So, what will, if, what will he get his admission to our gallery for?
That would be up to the al, the former alderman from the 26th to figure that out.
So, he, if, if, if he's not friendly with his alderperson, he wouldn't be allowed to come in here?
I, it's, you, there's no, nothing in the rule says you have to go to the specific alderman for the area where you live to get a pass, you could get it from whomever.
So, you can give, so I could give my passes to whomever?
As written, yes.
And again, so, if I'm friendly with lobbyists, then I can give my passes to lobbyists?
You're more than welcome to. You can also do a courtesy resolution for a lobbyist, as you proposed earlier.
Every week, exactly, that was what I was going to get to. You're just telling everybody what the holes are in what you're doing, exactly.
I don't know whether that's a hole.
Wait, wait, I, 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 I'm asking questions, I have the floor, I, no, 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 I have the floor. So, that was my next point. Could I do resolutions every week for registered lobbyists if I wanted to?
You're more than welcome to, yes.
And then, those registered lobbyists would be sitting where?
That would be up to the President.
I thought that our honored guests would be there.
Our rules speak to, that the President sort of decides the layout of where people are. Traditionally, it's on the sides, because that makes the most sense, but I mean, I don't know of anywhere in our rules that specifically says everybody sits on the sides. I think it's, he designates those areas.
Let's go back here again, so I want to understand this. Honored guests should be admitted to the floor. So, once the President designates, so, I don't know where else he would designate, are we going to, is it, your understanding, we're supposed to take the chairs away or leave them?
I don't know why we would take the chairs away necessarily, because I suspect on a weekly basis, we're still going to be honoring individuals and groups, you know, so I don't see a reason to actually get rid of all the chairs.
I don't either. So, then, since we got these lovely chairs, so I'm friendly with all these lobbyists, or, so I can do unlimited resolutions with the lobbyists, which would put them right back in these chairs.
You're more than welcome to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
I thought our original thoughts of what we were doing originally, which I agree with, was getting lobbyists so that they did not have more access to us than the people who we represent, than the people that vote for us, so.
That is the intent, but I would say, look, there are lobbyists, I mean, we're, we're using lobbyists like it's, it's a totally dirty word, I mean, there are people who lobby for all sorts of issues and interests that many of us agree with. I, I can tell you that, you know, if certain lobbyists retired from their companies or whatever tomorrow, I would, I might do a resolution to honor them for their service to their, their community, to everything else. So, I don't think the intent was those who are receiving an honor from this Board, whether they're a lobbyist or somebody else, I don't want, I don't think we should be banning those folks from the floor. It's everybody who's just wandering around down here on a weekly basis, and we don't know who they are or why they're here. I mean, I think we all agree, and it was pretty clear at caucus, we all agreed that this was a problem, but yes, alderwoman, there is certainly, I wouldn't even call it a loophole, it was not intended to ban lobbyists that maybe someday we may want to honor for their contributions. You know, there are members of city, employees of City Hall that may be registered as lobbyists, you know, on behalf of city departments or whatever else. If they were to retire and we want to honor them, we're more than welcome to do so, and they can come down and sit on the floor.
Okay, so, that's your word, not mine, that we use lobbyists as a dirty word, because that's not what I'm doing, I'm just using that. The reason, it could be somebody lobbying for a cause that I think is great, the, the eye of beholders, whether someone is a good lobbyist or a bad lobbyist, because if you're for an issue, you need that person to be out there lobbying for you. I'm not using it as good or bad, but I thought the whole entire purpose of originally for this bill was to get these folks off of the floor, let them have a seat up there if they wanted to. Yes, if we're honoring somebody, okay, we honored the alderman from the 26th, if we want to bring him back on his birthday, the former alderman, yes, we can do that, but on a day-to-day basis, that we should not have people sitting down in these chairs, okay? And not, never mind the wandering from behind the camera and everything else, or sneaking on the floor, all of that, which I don't like, okay? But what I equally don't like is banning someone who might stop by, maybe I don't know that somebody from the 1st Ward is stopping by and wanting to just watch what's going on in the gallery, up, stand up in the gallery. My people don't tend to come down on the floor. So, if there's seats, I don't want them not to be able to come in or to have to check with me, or for me to have to make a decision between two people, if it's a group of people that want to come, because we got this pass thing. So, what I started doing is, I started calling everyone, not, not, not the Congress people, but I called the state, I talked to the people, I talked to Representative Carter about what they do, they have an open gallery, I talked to some state senators about what they do, they have an open gallery up there like that, not just sitting on the floor. I also looked at the city, the county council, and they actually have an open gallery that's more like Room 208 on the floor. So, I do not understand the need to ban our constituents, and that is what, the part that I did not vote for the last time I sat with some people at my table, and we did not understand that. Getting the people off the floor, the walking around, I'm for it, but banning the people and giving only passes to certain people is something that I have a problem with and don't think that that's a good idea, and I don't see how that gets to anything that we originally talked about. And so, if you could explain it to me better so I can understand why giving out gallery passes will make it a better place for us to do our business and not prevent people who just happen to stop by, and I see them up there all the time, that just want to stop by and watch what's going on.
And, alderwoman, look, this was the version we passed and, we talked about and passed at caucus, if someone has a proposed amendment to remove that language, like, look, I think the important stuff is in paragraphs 1 through 4 and...
I like 5. 5 is good, too.
No, not, it's, sorry, 1 through 4 and, 1 through 5, basically.
Yes.
You know, if, if everybody wants to, if, if it's the opinion of my, our colleagues that we want to get rid of those parts, you know, I'm not jumping up and down over here, I just wrote the thing, I took input from people, this is what passed caucus, it's what I'm presenting here today.
Okay, and I understand and I appreciate, because you took, whenever you would lead, people could have a complaint about it. I also want to point out, the alderwoman from the 28th came up with a great idea. We did not accommodate ADA, and she put something in an amendment that accommodates ADA. Some people cannot go up there, whether they're honored guests or whatever, and sometimes it's not affecting us, we don't remember that. So, she does have something that accommodates ADA, and I was wondering if you would be open to us amending also to make sure that people who are in a wheelchair or have mobility issues might be able to use our chairs so that they can also observe this esteemed chamber.
Of course, and I think, you know, that was an oversight on my part and everyone else's, because frankly, it, it didn't even come up, and it, it should have. So, yeah, if the, the gallery's not ADA compliant, which I don't know if that section where the marshal's standing, he's shaking his head no, so clearly not, it's not ADA compliant. So, yes, we need to have a space for folks with mobility issues to, to watch, and yeah, I mean, I would certainly be open to that. And I, and I believe that's, that's coming off the printer here in a few minutes.
So, you would be open to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're waiting for it up in the printer.
Mr. President, at this point, I want to see where our amendment is, and so, I'm going to, I don't have any further questions for the alderman from the 7th. I do want to thank you, you did do a good portion about getting the people off the floor. I love that part, thank you for that.
All right, all right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the, if the alderman from the 7th would yield for a question?
Alderwoman from the 7th will yield for a question to the alderwoman from the 8th.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Alderwoman from the 8th, please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And, alderman, so, I, I did have one question about section 7 of the, of Rule 31 pertaining to what is in the gallery, and I, I agree, you know, that we need to have property decorum up there, I, I worry about the First Amendment implications on signage, preventing signage from being up there.
That's been removed.
Okay, is that removed in our?
So, there's an old version on your, look at the, alderwoman, if you would, there's a redlined version of the full rules, page 17, I mean, at caucus, when we were discussing this, that was one of the things we agreed to remove.
Great, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
That we did leave that we're not going to prohibit devices that amplify sound, I think it would be in everyone's best interest to not have bullhorns in the gallery.
I, I appreciate that. I think, I think that's my only question, I, I agree that we have some sort of straightening up to do down here, and I do think it further empowers our Sergeant of Arms for safety as well, for members of the Board and guests who are down here on the floor, to, to make sure that we know who is here down on the floor, know who's moving around, and it helps us to do our jobs a little bit more clear when we're not so closed in by folks. And I, I do think that it's, it's important that we continue to reiterate that this is a body that represents the people, and that people should be welcome to be here for meetings, to, that the gallery should be open. I agree with the alderwoman from the 1st that having gallery passes bothers me a lot, but I am glad to know that the alderman from the 7th is willing to entertain an amendment on that, and I hope that the rest of my colleagues would be as well. And I, I think that's all I have right now, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize... On the ADA compliance? You ready on the ADA? Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to introduce amendment number 1 to amendment 1, which is being distributed right now, which includes language, it includes the disabilities language. So, what we would do is add to paragraph 2, any persons with a mobility disability as described in the Americans with Disabilities Act who cannot otherwise access seating in the gallery. It's, it's coming around right now. There is all, okay, we would, the amendment would strike paragraph 6 and 8. Right, and then, finally, it would allow employees of St. Louis Development Corporation or Community Development Administration who are assisting aldermen with sponsoring a bill on the floor.
All right, it's been moved by the alderwoman from the 28th, and seconded by the alderwoman from the 7th. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion on the amendment? Alderwoman from the 7th?
No, I have no discussion, I, I think this is fine, I think, I think as written that maybe, I mean, this sort of further clarifies that SLDC and CDA employees will be allowed in here, I think that I would have put them under the umbrella of the mayor's designees, but putting that in there is fine, I don't see any issue with, I mean, the disability language is great, and then it just removes the, the two paragraphs about the gallery, so I, I would encourage, I think this is a friendly amendment, and I'd go ahead and vote for it.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 28th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 7th. All in favor, signify, percent, aye. Oppose, motion carries. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize the clause on amendment, on resolution 1?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I appreciate the assistance of our colleagues and their input on this process, and for those that have worked on this previously, I think this is a good step, I think it's an important step for this body to sort of rein things in and, and take ourselves a little more seriously, so everybody else does as well, on a weekly basis. So, I look forward to, to a little more calmness down here on a weekly basis, and a, and a fuller gallery, now that we've, we've changed these rules. So, with that, I would renew my motion to adopt resolution 1 as amended.
It's been, been, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify, percent, aye. Oppose, motion carries. With this, this pencil lying item 23, miscellaneous unfinished business, alderwoman from the 1st.
Did we just adopt his amendment, because I have an amendment also?
No, we adopted resolution number 1.
Then, being on the prevailing side, I move to reconsider, because I have an amendment that's been on the...
You can, you can...
No, I have to, if we're adopting the rules, I have to do it now.
I know, because otherwise, it's two-thirds when we come up.
Right.
All right.
I thought you recognized him for his amendment not to do the rules.
No, the whole, he, he went through the whole rule, so resolution number 1 is what he was on, so he adopted the entire rules, which were, which was amended by the alderwoman from the 28th.
Being on the prevailing side, I move to reconsider so that I can introduce amendment number 2.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the alderwoman from the 25th, that we, we move to reconsider the previous vote, and, yeah, it's been moved and seconded that we reconsidered the vote for resolution number 1. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Moore?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderwoman Kotor?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderwoman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderwoman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ornowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderwoman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Vacoro?
Aye.
Alderwoman Orion?
Aye.
Alderwoman Con?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ornowitz? Alderwoman Murphy?
No.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Aye.
By vote, you stay in the motion, alderwoman from the 1st. Alderwoman from the 1st, recognized.
I thank you for your support in reconsidering my, the motion, so that I could put amendment 2 before you. Amendment 2 is before you, and it's a very serious amendment, and it is not anything that I want to be treated special, it is something for my seniority, because I want my community to be treated the same as everybody else's community. And so, when we had redistricting back in 2001, for the first time ever in the history of the Board of Aldermen, we moved a senior alderperson who had got elected three times. And what that did, not only did we move it, we moved the 20th Ward, but we also gave it a number that was odd, so that I couldn't even run for reelection in 2003, which is a violation of our charters. For those of you who are alderpeople who are even, just imagine if you went to run for reelection, and you went this, this time, and you went to run for reelection, you had won three elections, living in your same house, and somebody had changed your number, and all of a sudden, now you are an odd number, and you can't run for reelection. Not only is it not about you, you also, all your people did not get to vote. So all the people in my ward, who should have been able to vote in two thousand and three, were not able to vote. That means that they could not keep their continuing seniority, no matter what happened, okay? No matter what happened, no matter that they had voted for me all these times, no matter that I didn't quit, I couldn't run for reelection in the place that I represent. And what had happened is that that was a gerrymandering. It easily could have been prevented by having the twentieth ward stay and putting the ninth ward in the twentieth ward. We would have had an election, I'm sorry, not the ninth, the first ward in the twentieth ward, and we would have had an election, and that would have given the first ward Alderwoman the chance to run against me, and nobody would have lost their vote. But the way we did it, it was no way to keep continuing seniority. So the only way we can address that is the same board that took this continuing seniority away needs to put it back. I have eighteen years of being at this Board of Aldermen. I have never been defeated as the Alderwoman of the twentieth or the first. There are only one, there's only one person who has more seniority than me, and that's the person who voted to violate my voting rights, who, so I want to thank the President for giving me a chance, because sometimes you make a mistake, and you could get a chance to, to change that. And so I am so surprised that the Alderman from the seventeenth, who kept my people from voting, and kept them from having seniority, would not want to change his vote and say, "Look, we know we did this, let's improve this, let's do this better." Either all the citizens of St. Louis are equal, or they're not. And when you carve out an exception to keep a group of people from having a senior alderperson, when they continued and continued to vote for the same person, you're saying those people are lesser than everybody else. The other part of my definition of, so in this board bill, we define seniority, what is continuing seniority. We also define what happens when we get ready to, to reduce the number of Board of Aldermen. When we get ready to go from twenty-eight to twenty-four, one of the things that's going to happen is that we're going to have to merge some people. Think what you would feel like if you were a senior alderperson, and you, all of a sudden, find yourself put in another...
Alderman from, waiting for you to get through all that, but, but hold for one second, because we do need to get the bill, the, our resolution back before us properly, and then we'll let you continue. Alderman from the seventh, recognized.
I, I move to adopt Resolution one as amended.
As, as previous amendment, it's been moved, I'm turning to second.
Somebody's seconded.
Moving to second now, now we're ready to, all right, continue.
Amendment two. I've already talked to most of it, so I don't need to repeat it, hopefully. It's about seniority. It's about restoring something that was taken away from the people in my community, and that if you don't do this, there's no way they could have seniority. And you would be saying that they are stuck not having a senior alderperson. But it also addresses another issue that's going to become very relevant from some of you. If we reduce, and if we reduce down from fourteen, twenty-eight to fourteen, then what will happen is that some people will get put in the same wards. If you have had all kind of seniority, you got twelve years of seniority, eight years of seniority, and all of a sudden, they put you in a separate ward where you cannot run for reelection, or something happens, or you don't get elected, this gives you a chance to come back and not lose your seniority on a one-time basis. And that is done so that, because this is going to be a very traumatic experience, if you haven't experienced it. It's especially traumatic if you treat it unfairly, but it's also traumatic if you, everybody gets the same chance. So what I'm asking this board is to look down the road and look at what fairness looks like, and if you think it's all right to keep the Alderman from the seventeenth, who violated the Voting Rights Act, and violated my right to vote, and violated the people who live in my community, and violated the Constitution of United States and the Missouri Constitution, he can stay number one, but me, who did nothing, and my people who did nothing, who actually voted right and kept doing it, if we don't have the same equal chance. The President in his speech talked about conquering the Delmar divide. This is part of conquering the Delmar divide. It's about being fair. I was just fair with the Board Attorney in a way that I could have said something different, but I came up with a suggestion, let's be fair. And I often stand on this floor and talk about being fair. And I often stand up for people who, I feel like the rule has gone against them, but I think it's, I've taken up for so many of you. I am not asking for anything that is not supposed to be my community in the first place. They are supposed to be number two in seniority. They are not supposed to be down at eleven and twelve. I don't, I didn't, I wrote it very restrictively, so I've heard some people say, "Well, why didn't Sharon just move?" Because if I had moved my community, and I would still not have the seniority, the people in the Kingsway East and West Neighborhood would not have the seniority. Often, we think redistricting is about the politician. Redistricting is about the people. The reason why we redistrict is so that people can have approximately the same number of people in a ward. It is not so that you can use a move to take something away from a community. It is not so that you can be vindictive and mean and violates people's right to vote. Redistricting is about the people, so the only way you restore my people wholly is that you do this. When you ask that question about why didn't I move, I remind myself of when I practiced law, people would say, "Well, that woman, she got raped. Why did she wear her dress so short? Why did she wear that color?" Or when people get shot in the back, I hear people say, "Well, why did they run?" Okay, it's not, you're blaming the person who something happened to. You're not standing up for the person who got wrong, you're standing up for the wrong person. The wrong people are getting the benefit of this. So how many of you have I been fair to? And how many of you have I stood up for and said, "This is the fair thing"? If this was not fair, I myself would be taken, taken out, would be saying, "I'm out of order." But this is the only way I've been able to figure out how the people who I represent could get their seniority that belongs to them. And that's why I stand here today. Continuing seniority is not in the charter. In fact, if you look in the charter, it doesn't say that. That's something we made up. And so I'm asking this Board of Aldermen to partially right a wrong that was done, and not to continue to tell the people who now are called the first ward, but used to be called the twentieth ward, that they don't matter, and that they don't get seniority no matter what. And I would appreciate your support of Amendment number two.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things that I am considering in, in regards to this amendment is, our, our colleagues in the Missouri Legislature have term limits, and regardless of when you are elected, your years of service count towards your term limit. You could work for, for one term, you could take a break for four years, and you could come back and get elected again, and those two years you initially served do count against your eventual term limit. We don't have quite the same thing here in the city, we don't have term limits, but I think it, it makes sense for a continuity for a community, or for a service, to, to count up and not, not strike out your years of service, right? People can leave, leave a job for any number of reasons, if you have a health emergency, things like that. Having to start over again in your representation of your community is, is difficult, both for the job and for the community. And I, I do think, especially with ward reduction upcoming, half, half of the people here will not have, have those positions, right? But we, we should be working towards what, what could happen if, if this goes forward. So that, that's part of my consideration, and I just wanted to share that, that, that we're, you know, anytime we redistrict, this is always a risk, and to, to allow our communities the, the right to vote, to have their representative be on the ballot, and to not strip them of opportunities, and the respect in service that they've earned in their years of service, I think is important, regardless of who the particular person or personality or ward it is. I think that this is sort of an issue of fairness across the board, and I, I think it will be a significant issue in the ward reduction going forward, and we have the opportunity to, to set that standard now. So, thank you.
Alderman from the sixteen?
Mr. President, members of the Board. Mr. President, will the Alderwoman from the first yield for a few questions, please?
Alderman from first, will you yield to Alderman from the sixteenth?
I will.
Alderman from the sixteenth, please proceed.
Alderwoman, what would you clarify for me, please, the virtue of this amendment? What is good about it?
What's good about it?
What service does it do? And whom, and whom does it serve?
What's good about it? Oh, well, I want to use the words of the Alderman from the seventeenth, who went on and waxed philosophy, when was that, on Monday, the fourteenth, about all the continuing, continuing service and the continuing, continuing of your seniority. The thing what's good about it is that that community gets a senior alderperson who has influence, who gets to pick a committee of influence. When I left here in two thousand and three, not because I lost, not because I quit, I was the Chair of Public Safety, right then and there. I had worked my way up. I did not cheat, I did not lose. I had worked my way up. And, and when I talk about "I," please know this, I'm talking about my community, because they went to the polls every single time, every single time, and voted for me, and I did not lose, and I did not quit. And so when you're in the same house that you lived in in thirty-two years, and you don't get to vote, what is the goodness of taking the vote away from people? What is the goodness of gerrymandering? What is the goodness of questioning me? I want you to ask the people who voted the other way, what was the goodness in tearing up a community and tearing up something that was successful? Because we were successful. We were not that Northside Ward that people like to think that black people live in. We were the middle-class ward with middle-class values. We outvoted the sixteenth ward, by the way. We outvoted the twenty-eighth ward. So what was the goodness in tearing up a community that was positive and thriving and taking away somebody they had voted for three other times in a row? Now, to just advise you, and I will give you all of this, when they put one, one precinct back, and the, our current clerk used to have that, one, because they tore my ward up into six precincts, know this, we didn't lose any population. We were the ward in North St. Louis that did not lose any population. They put it in six, five or six different wards, and tore it up, and told the people, "You do not have a right to choose your own elected official." Put one precinct back, and they said, "Oh, we do have a right to choose our own elected official, and we should be treated just like the people from the sixteenth, the fourteenth, the twelfth, any of the other people." By doing this, what the badness is, is you robbed me, I can't, I didn't vote in two thousand and three. I couldn't run for reelection. Now, the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh knows this. She knows I could be a state rep right now, because I had the vote. I had the, they were going to make me the state rep. I chose to come back to this Board of Aldermen, because the people in my ward said, "We never, ever, ever voted you out." They, to this day, still call themselves the real twentieth ward, because you don't know the hurt and the pain and the insult when you take somebody's vote away from it. So this is just a little bit of restoring the dignity to the people that are in now called the first ward, where their vote was stolen from them, where their dignity, their right to choose their own elected officials, that, that's the, that's what the goodness is, and that they get a senior alderperson, so that they have the same rights that everybody else does.
I have another question, Alderwoman. You mentioned that this was a charter violation, and gerrymandering took place. Could you just real quickly fill me in on the facts there, where in the charter it was violated?
Let's not say we use continuing seniority. Look at the charter. It doesn't say continuing seniority.
Okay. One more question. Often, gerrymandering cases end up in the courts. People who feel that they are wrongly, on the receiving end of, of gerrymandering cases, often, there are rights and remedies through the course of law. Were those pursued, and if so, what were the conclusions of, of that pursuit, Alderwoman?
No, it wasn't. And it wasn't because I was so angry. I went in my house and was, yes, I was angry, yes. You won't know about that. Have you ever had your vote taken away? Have you ever lived in a place for thirty years? Have you ever been black and stood up with your grandmother while she tried to vote, and she couldn't because of poll taxes? These are the things that you, see, you get over the fact that. Say this, have you ever had somebody take your rightfully right to vote away? Because that's what happened to me. And sometimes, wait, no, you asked me, so I'm answering.
I would have pursued my rights and remedies in the court.
But that's you, and I'm not you. I'm a black female that was wronged, okay? I'm not a white male with all the privileges, and I don't want to get into all of that. There's a lot of ways to right a wrong. So what you can do is, you can do courts, but you could come back here like me. You can start, you can keep working. Do you know I'm sitting right back in my chair, that I sat in now for sixteen years? I'm in my office where I was when I was gerrymandered. See, gerrymandering is not a good thing. That's an illegal thing. That is not something good that you poo-poo, but you also can come and work the political system, because guess what I found in the, the Missouri laws? Missouri laws covers all these things about, if you do redistricting, how you can't just then come after the Alderman, and you can't remove them, or you can't come after the elected official. So I came back here because the only thing stopping me from my seniority is not the charter, it's some made-up rules that the Board of Aldermen made up. And just like we can adjust, you would adjust, everybody was so fair, when we were talking about, what we talked about in personnel, everybody talked about the fairness. I want you to be the same fairness with me. If you figure out a way how my people could have the seniority that they voted for, and not be the only people in the city of St. Louis that don't have it, then come talk to me. But if you don't, and you haven't experienced that, and you stand here, you're just one of the people who said, "Why did that woman wear that short red skirt when she got raped?"
I have no further questions, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventeenth?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I guess I was referenced several times today. I'd like to remember, remind everybody that there was actually a number of other people down here at the time that voted for that map. Matter of fact, it was the majority of the people down here that voted for that map. And as, by way of history, when these issues have come up before, it's been fairly consistent. I believe Alderman, I'm sure, the previous Alderman Bosley, who was Alderman, initially served down here, I guess, from probably the mid to late seventies, ran for mayor, came back, was, stood out for four years, came back at the end of those four years, asked to have his seniority restored, and they were not. It was not, so there is a history there. And matter of fact, I believe the Alderwoman from the first voted against him getting his seniority back. Don't, don't know that for a fact, but I do know that, that as a fact, he was denied his seniority. And then we had situations where independents, folks who initially ran as an independent, ended up coming back and applying or asking for seniority, and the caucus has historically denied that as well. So with that in mind, I, you know, I, there is lots more history that, and other comments that I can make, but I think we've been hearing about this for so long down here that I don't want to prolong the discussion by kind of defending some of the remarks that were made about me today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fifteenth?
Mr. President, members of the Board. I think that there's some differences between what the Alderwoman of the first is asking for today, and say, a situation like myself. I came down here like an independent. That was my choice to come down here as an independent, knowing that I would not have my seniority from the years that I was here as an independent. There's been a number of other people who have come down there. That was a choice that I made. Another choice that can be made is when somebody decides to leave office and run for something else, and then they come back at a later date. They are at choice in that their community, who supports them in running for those other offices, are at choice. I've did, I've done a lot of reading, going back through archives, going back through media stories, trying to figure out all of the, the dynamics from the day. And what it seems to me is that the issue comes down to choice, that the, the Alderwoman from the first, her community was not at choice in this. And, and I think that we need to be cognizant of this. You don't have to like the Alderwoman from the first, you don't have to want to get a beer with her after this, or, or work with her, but this isn't about her, it's about her community. And I think that we run a slippery slope when we decide to take choice away from communities. And I think that that is what happened during that time, and, and I do support the efforts of the Alderwoman from the first in trying to right a pass wrong.
Any further, Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yes, I would ask if the Alderman from the seventeenth would yield for a question for...
Alderman from the seventeenth, Alderman from the seventeenth will yield for question to Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Alderman, can you remind us, how many years have you been down here at the Board of Aldermen?
Thirty-one years.
Thirty-one years. And in your thirty-one years, have you ever seen a red... And in your 31 years, have you ever seen a redistricting in which someone's ward number was sent to a different geography?
Well, not while I was down here, but immediately before I came down, there was an issue in the 25th ward, which used to be considered the Central West End Ward, was actually redistricted and moved to where it is, or close to where it is today. I'm sure it's been moved several times since that time. But Dave Pentland was the Alderman at the time, and I believe Dave actually moved down there to run in there, and he was unsuccessful in his effort.
Okay.
Vague memory, but don't hold me to that.
I just want to address some of the concerns I hear when we use certain language, like people's vote was taken away from them. I've been down here for 16 years now, and I've been through two redistrictings. And not one time do I remember the committee or the Board of Aldermen asking any constituent in the city of St. Louis if it's okay to move them to a different ward. So, when redistricting happens, here's a couple of things that can happen to our constituency. You could take a ward, and I'm just making an example, so you could take a ward, and you could take one-third of that ward, and move it and combine it with another ward. You may be an Alderman with 16 years of service, but the Alderman where a third of your ward was shifted, may be an Alderman that's only been six years. So, those people would lose seniority, if we use the analogy of the Alderman from the first. So, we don't really give the public an input when redistricting happens. It just happens. And so, when you move around, somebody's going to gain an Alderman, possibly with seniority, somebody's going to lose an Alderman of seniority. Politics is a game of chess, at the end of the day. Moving somebody's ward number to a different geography is nothing new. There's been a precedence for that, okay? Redistricting happens every 10 years. Somebody ends up in a ward with an alderperson with less seniority than the one that they had. There are oftentimes, some people, and I'm sure you would admit it, as an Alderman down here, somebody might say, "I'm so glad you're my alderperson. I'm so glad they moved me to your ward," for whatever reason. Yes, we give the public a chance to participate, per se. We have committee hearings, and people can come and say what they want to say. But at the end of the day, the board actions is what's going to redefine the geography and the boundaries of the new wards after redistricting. So, I want to be clear, and I don't think it's fair to say people's vote was taken away, because people still had the right to vote in the new ward for that particular alderperson that's running in that particular district. So, I don't subscribe, and I don't support the fact that people's votes have been taken away. That is language of fear to me, because I would have a problem with that if somebody was taking my vote away. Now, if I happened to be redistricted into another ward, I still get the vote. Nobody's taking my right to vote away. So, I just wanted to bring that up, because that language, I don't think it's fair language to say that somebody's vote was taken away. Was it taken away to vote for the person that used to be there? Yeah, but that happens every redistricting. It's not an anomaly. That's nothing new. And I don't think it's fair to say that someone's vote was taken away.
Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to continue where the Alderman just left off. It is not healthy for us to bring rhetoric up and create fear and misunderstanding to the public. I've said this before, there is no such thing as taking someone's vote away from them. And redistricting lines are redrawn every 10 years. If that's the case, I want my old 19th ward back. How about that? We'd like to have the old 19th ward back from 2000, redistricting. The federal guidelines of redistricting on the state and local levels are very clear, and the opportunities for what you can do in that process. If anything was done wrong by law, you can file a lawsuit, and/or, remember, we are monitored an entire year after redistricting is done, and all the methods that you used are looked at. And if there was anything that had been done wrong illegally, the federal government would have stepped in here in a heartbeat. I know, because I've served on the state level for redistricting, and also went through last redistricting here. And so, don't put the fear out there to people. I understand your passion. I understand where you are, and you would like to do something different. But we also have to remember, this was not the first time that this has happened, that wards were moved. It won't be the last time. Had we been a responsible board, as we have lost the last 500,000 people in this city, we would have eliminated wards along the way, for the last 40 years or so. And we would probably be down to somewhere between seven and nine wards. That would have been the more responsible thing to do. So, there's a lot of what-if-and-maybe, and coulda, and woulda. But I don't like for my public to be put upon with fear unnecessarily so. And again, now, this is another thing, every time I go to a neighborhood meeting, I'm going to have to clarify. We continue to put wrong information out here, and that's not healthy. I understand the passion and the desire, but there was nothing illegal done. If that is the case, if that is the case, then why didn't all of you restore Alderman Bosley's seniority? Why did you all fight so hard against that? So, you got to think about this. And I don't know where you are on it, and I kind of, I kind of can't get, you know where I'm at on everything. I just stay in the practical lane, and I'm done with it. But I don't want the fear put out there. Every person in the geographics and the boundaries of the city of St. Louis still had their right to vote, and they voted for the persons that ran for office in those two designated areas. No one's vote was taken away from them. If you want to say something, you can say that the person who was previously the alderperson of that designated area chose not to run again. That's the only way their vote was taken away from them. Thank you.
Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree that when we go from 28 to 14 wards, that I think it's worth considering how seniority will play out there, because that will be a significant change, and it will impact the voters, it will impact us as a body here. And last session, we did approve a ward reduction advisory committee to look at the implementation of the reduction from 28 to 14, to see how is that going to play out? What sort of changes do we need to make at the board to make sure that we are best serving our constituents? So, I would suggest that this topic be explored by an advisory committee, so that we can see, how do we implement, how do we implement these changes? And I think the question of seniority, given that significant change from 28 to 14, would be a worthwhile discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Another one from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say that I think this begs a larger discussion on leadership here. You know, some legislative bodies, they don't base it on seniority. The body elects their leadership. So, maybe that's something, and I know that was discussed a little bit with the rules changes. But also, you know, in the Missouri Legislature, they don't do seniority, but if you serve two years, or you serve, let's say you serve two terms, you take another job, you do something else, you raise your kids, and you decide to go back, that time, if it was before, or, excuse me, if it was post-term limits being enacted, then that time counts. So, you still, that counts towards your four terms. So, technically, that does count. So, I just want to point that out. But I do have a problem, I would be okay with perhaps allowing it to count previous time served. However, I just find this amendment just incredibly self-serving. Let's say my predecessor came back, Alderman Tom Villa, should he get his seniority? Maybe, perhaps. But under this amendment, it would just be for one particular person who feels like they were redistricted out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Members of the board, I have heard so much misinformation. Let's start with the first one. So, I was not here when Alderman Bosley came back. So, the first thing that Alderman from the 17th said is, "Why I fought against the Alderman from the third seniority, I was not here." That actually got changed when Daisy McFaulan left, and I was not here then either, and then came back. So, that's a falsehood. Then, we brought up the independent Kenny Jones. Kenny Jones, the Alderman from the 22nd, knows that Kenny Jones was an independent from the 22nd for 18 or 20 years. And we do not count your independent service, just like we do not count if you are a Republican. We had a Republican down here for 29 years. We did not count his seniority. Now, let's talk about the people who said, "Your vote was not taken away." That's a bald-faced untruth. I did not use that as inflammatory. So, I want, if the Alderman from the 7th will, I'm sorry, from the 22nd will yield, I will give him an example of how your vote is taken away.
Alderman from the 22nd will yield to the Alderman from the first. Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. You just ran for reelection in 22nd ward.
Correct.
So, if they, when you got ready to run for reelection, if they put your, took your party where you live, and put it into an odd number, when you got ready to run, not only could you not seek reelection, but all the people, and do you agree that we're supposed to have elections for Aldermen every four years?
That's according to the charter.
So, here you are, but you're in an odd number now. And guess what? Not only can you not run, you cannot vote. So, in 2003, the majority of my ward, except for very few little parts of it, could not vote in 2003, and that took their right to have elected an Alderman every four years. That is how you take somebody's vote away.
Alderman, I remember when redistricting was coming to surface.
I want to know, so my question to you is, if you were put in an odd number, would you be able to run this past election?
Let me say it to you this way.
Now, my question to you is, would you have been able to run if you were put in an odd number?
Now, you asked me a question, so that mean I have the mic, correct?
No, it means you can answer my question, yes or no, or you don't want to answer.
Well, I think when you were supportive of a 22nd ward being sent to South St. Louis...
I never was.
I remember having a conversation with you...
That's a lie. I still have, that is not true.
Honest to God, truth.
You're not answering my question. If you don't want to answer...
And you had no problem with the 22nd ward...
I take the floor back. That's a lie. That's a lie. I still have the map. It's a lie. Mr. President, I still have the map, Mr. President. Thank you.
One person, one person... Yeah, one person at a time.
I have all this paperwork. I never drew anything, that was a lie that was put out. I never drew to move the 22nd ward to South St. Louis. That's all this stuff that they're making up. I actually have all this stuff. I will share it with any of you all. I have the old maps, I have the tapes, I have everything. I want to tell you something else. Whenever they have done redistricting, and they have moved before, it has always been a first-term alderperson. They also always put them in a ward where they could still run. If they moved it, or if they shifted, they gave you the fair chance to seek election, and your people got a right to run. How you could have made this so it wouldn't have happened? I touched, the 20th touched the 22nd, the 18th, and the 4th. All of our people could have been shifted, so that they would be in even numbers, they would have kept their vote, and then they would have kept the ability for the alderperson to run. So, that is, when you put things out, I will challenge you to prove it, because I can prove that what you said is not true. I never did that. That was what Kenny Jones put out, so that he could justify. It is so, no, I did not. I never drew it. I have the maps. I have everything. And so, when you treat people differently, that is not true. And so, I have proved that you can take people's vote away. I have proved that they never moved a senior alderperson. I have proved that when they moved the 25th ward, Dave Pentland was a first-term alderperson, and they moved him, and where he continued to live, he was able to move to the 25th and run, or stay in the 28th, because the election was coming up. So, the point is, if you had put me in a ward where an election was coming up, and you let my people vote, I wouldn't be standing here. The choice was not given. And we didn't have to move any wards, we had to shift wards. And we are the majority of the population, African-American, and we were close to then. We used to have 13 black Aldermen. We only have 11 now. That came about from the redistricting in both 2001 and 2011. That is not fair representation. That is not fair. So, when people put out this misinformation, I will challenge anybody to their spot on the Board of Aldermen, and then I'll show you my proof that that never happened, and that they took our right to vote away, and we sat there, and in fact, I went to file, and filed my paperwork, and they did not let me run. And we sat there in 2003, and three-quarters of my ward was not allowed to vote. And if you don't call that taking votes away, I don't know what it is. It is exactly taking votes away. And everybody is going to vote their conscience. I want to thank you for listening to me. I promise you, I'm not lying to you, and anybody who wants to see it, I'll show you. This is the only way I can get, is you could call it self-serving. I call it serving my community. And I think it's fair that they have a right to have the same access as everyone else. And I'd ask you to support my amendment. And I also would like to submit to you that I have the original board bill, where we did redistricting. And two of the people that were not on it was the Alderman from the 10th and the Alderman from the 6th, who was our president at the time, because they also was tearing up their wards and moving them too. It was a vicious thing. They had all-white meetings, they had closed meetings. It was nothing that you want to be proud of, it's nothing that you want to put your stamp on. And any of you all who know me, I have tried to be fair, even at my own expense, and I am not lying to you when I say, the things that they're saying are not true. They did take our vote away. I did not try to move the 22nd ward. We shifted, and anybody wants to see that original map, I still have it. And I would ask for your support, and I renew my motion, Mr. President. And I ask for a roll call.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved, and seconded that we adopt amendment number two. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Friday?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Koltar?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Volmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Ornowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Brody?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Yes.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Velcoro?
Aye.
Alderman Narayan?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
Mr. President?
No.
Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Narayan?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
10 aye votes and 16 no votes.
I vote, fail to stand the motion, Alderman from the first. Alderman from the 7th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I renew my motion to adopt resolution one, as amended.
It's been moved, and seconded that we adopt the resolution number one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I have to roll call, and I have to study.
Alderman, you know that's out of time, because once I start calling the vote... All along, you know that, that's out of time because I, once I start calling the vote... All along, I will, I will give you, all along from the first, you're recognized.
Did you not see me standing at this mic?
No, I didn't.
Did other body, did other people, I was standing at this mic?
But go, go ahead, go ahead.
So, I'm going to be opposed to this, these rules. This is a continuation of the racism and the sexism and the ignorance of redistricting. I am appalled at the people who voted no, that I have helped. I will be, this will be continued. I used to wonder, why did this happen? Why would you do something to my community like this? And now, I get it. And I would say to God, what, what happened? I was so angry when this happened. I'm not angry now. I'm focused. And this is not going away. And when the rabbit has the gun, people don't like it. Long as they have the gun and they're hunting the rabbit, they think that's funny. When the rabbit has the gun, people don't like it. God did this for a reason, and the reason is because I'm not going to give it up. You could talk about all the lies that you want to. I will be continuing to have hearings. I will show you all the lies that were just put out here. They were not mistakes. They're ball-faced lies. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. Don't come in my office, for those of you who voted no, and asking for anything from me anymore because you will not get it. Because if you don't think that my people are just as equal to the people you represent, then you have a problem. And I'm not talking about the new people who I knew was with me, but I know there's some other people that ought to be ashamed of themselves. And so, I want a roll call so I can vote no on this, and I will be doing roll calls on lots of things until we get this matter adjusted and corrected.
It's been moved and seconded, but all, been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Ingracia? Alderman Koltar? Alderwoman Rice? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Valmer? Alderwoman Martin? Alderman Ornowitz? Alderwoman Murphy? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green? Alderman Odenberg? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Todd? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vicaro? Alderman Norrion? Alderman Con? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderwoman Navarro? Mr. President? Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderman Ornowitz? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Con? Twenty-two aye votes, two no votes, and one present.
By your vote, you stand the motion, all the aldermen from the seventh, and adopt a resolution number one as amended. With the Spencer line item 2023, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Friday, Friday?
All along from, go ahead, Madam Clerk. Yeah, please proceed, Madam.
Friday, April 26, 10:00 a.m., full board meeting in the chambers.
We are going to postpone that one to next.
So, that is a full board meeting, 10:00 a.m., May the 3rd, 2019.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth.
I hope you all RSVP for my party tomorrow night. Come and party in the fourth, but you have to dial 724-7566, 724-7566, and reserve your place because there might not be enough chicken for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, all along from the twenty-eighth.
President, this weekend is St. Louis Earth Day in Forest Park, so 11 to 5. Come out, get outside, enjoy the outdoors. You can also learn a lot about sustainable products and services that are available at our local businesses, as well as meet some local nonprofits, and have a lot of fun. There'll be bands and food. So, I would love to see you all out at the park this weekend.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? All along from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. So, we have, we have a lot of activities that'll be coming up in the next few weeks as people are coming out with their spring events across the city. But what I want to talk about today is, on this Sunday here at City Hall, we'll have a viewing of the Shark series. We have a person from the city of St. Louis that is on the show. Of course, he couldn't tell us whether he received money or not, but I believe that he would not be pulling together a showing viewing party if he hadn't. And so, a lot of you all know Cedric Cobb. He's a young businessman that really started with nothing, has really promoted his company. And so, I'm excited for him. And then, I also wanted to share with you that as we move forward in the next coming months, along with Alderman from the third ward, what is the name of them folks? Oh, Urban League is going to be doing something exciting in his ward. So, he's going to have the premier financial resource center at the old PNC Bank. I stole that because I had, I'm so excited for you, I couldn't hold it. All right? Okay, thank you.
All along from the first.
President, I have a point of order. So, we have a agenda on our desk. Are we doing that agenda also?
No, no, we are not going to.
We're going to just finish your...
Yes, yes, thanks, and thanks to you for pointing that out to the clerk earlier. So, we're going to do that next week.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, all along. Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow, we have a community meeting at Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club, where we'll be talking about trying to address some of the violence in our city. If you all feel so, please come out just to have the conversation. Of course, I know we all are super busy and a lot of things are going on, but I wanted to extend that to the rest of the members in the board and your constituents. It doesn't necessarily have to be in support of what I've talked about thus far, as far as the National Guard, but this is more so about just having the conversation collectively so we can at least get somewhere that we all kind of can believe in as a direction that the city's going in to help reduce some of the egregious crimes that are taking place in our communities. So, that is tomorrow at 10 o'clock at Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club on North Grand. That's the first announcement. I also would like to kind of throw out there, I don't know how much you all battle with the different departments and how they spend your money when we allocate funds. We all just have budget meetings, but we all know that things are not being done, I think, from my perspective, the correct way. A lot of money is disappearing, and things are not supposed to be the way that they are. Our alleys are filled with trash. We got dumpsters that need to be replaced. A lot of things, I think, are not being done. I want to throw out there, we have about $3 million to do some things within our parks in the third ward. And when I announce to the public what we intend to do, I do not want those funds to disappear because things like that happen. So, I'm asking everybody in the Board of Aldermen, if you get approached by the Parks Department or any department, and they're throwing funds to you that you didn't have, that were allocated to your particular ward, don't accept those funds because those are funds that we have allocated to this community to do some amazing things, and more importantly, to try to curb some of the violence that go, that's going on within the third ward and around the third ward. And really, if we can kind of bring the violence that's happening in my community down, then it will help everybody's community. But I don't want to see these funds reallocated when we talk about what we're actually going to use them for. And the only way they can reallocate them is if you all accept those funds. So, I wanted you all to ensure, I wanted to ensure that you all knew about how much money we have, once again, it's about $3 million. Don't let them take our money and, and you accept it. Thank you.
All right. All along from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, Mr. President. I wanted to announce tomorrow, the twenty-seventh and second ward are partnering, and they're having a community meeting. We have Circuit Attorney Kim Gardner there at 5868 West Florissant at the City Hall Bible Church at 10 o'clock. And then, we'll have, New Northside is sponsoring a opium clinic where they are collecting past-due prescriptions, and they are asking all residents to bring in any outdated or prescriptions that you're not using because DEA is trying to focus on this opium epidemic. Thank you.
All along, all along from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I just wanted to announce in the twenty-sixth ward tomorrow evening, it's going to be something different. Sam, we not going to miss your party. We going to be at your party. But in between, May before, after, you can stop in the twenty-sixth ward. It's having a bonfire. It's not the twenty-sixth ward. I don't want to take credit for it. It's an amazing artist named Bill Christman. Some of you all may be familiar with him. And he has the land at the corner of Cabanee and Union, and he is proposing and already has plans to make it into a sculpture park, which is something different for the city of St. Louis, especially moving north. And so, tomorrow, he's going to baptize by fire his land to start it off, and it's going to be a giant bonfire. He's going to have a gospel jazz artist, Erica Reed. And whether if there's, if there's inclement weather, he's going to move it to May 4th so you can just stay tuned for that. But right now, it's still going on, it's planned a bonfire tomorrow evening from 7:00 to 9:30. Bring your families, bring your lawn chairs, bring your blankets, and come out and have a good time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All along from the eleventh. Sorry, I missed you earlier.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to announce that in the eleventh tomorrow morning, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the sheet metal workers, Local 36, they will be at our 11th Ward Food Forest, which is open to everyone. This is a, this is an LRA lot that is turned into a community garden, but it's also a garden that's open to anyone who needs the food. So, they're growing sustainable plants and putting in an orchard. And again, this is for everyone. And this is at 555 Herc from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the sheet metal workers are providing a barbecue. So, thanks to them. Thank you.
All along from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce the twenty-second ward will have its monthly meeting on Tuesday, April the 30th at 6:00 p.m., 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Omega Center, 3900 Goodfellow. By the way, we will also have representatives from the Citizen Service Bureau there to do a presentation to get a good understanding and educate the constituents on how their complaints move through the system and where bottlenecks may be and how we can make it a better system.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move to excuse the alderwomen from the fifth and the fourteenth wards.
It's moved by the Alderman from the twenty-second. Seconded by the Alderman from the tenth. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-second, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adjourn until next Friday, May 3rd, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by the Alderman from the second, twenty-second. Seconded by the Alderman from the tenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.